Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Newton Planning Commission. I want to thank everyone for being here. Tonight's agenda, the first agenda item is to consider approval of the October 2nd, 2023 meeting minutes. Did everyone have an opportunity to review those?
Yes, sir.
And if so, I would entertain an emotion for their amendment or for their approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Mr. Kelsey makes a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Second? There's a motion and a second discussion in regard to the minutes.
So this is kind of outside this, but I'd like to visit with counsel at the end, or you would like, would you rather do it right now?
No, I think we could probably do it at the end, because it's not pertaining to the minutes. It's just procedural. Procedural in the minutes. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Can we do that? We'll just have it under new business, then? Is that okay? Is that all right with you, Arnold?
Yes, it is.
It is? Any other discussion in regard to the minutes? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Out of stain, since I wasn't here. Motion carries. Item two on tonight's agenda is to review the final plat for Wichita Parks and Public Works addition. The final plat, which Newton Parks and Public Works Edition PDF is attached. Who's going to be handling that? Is that you, Justin?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Attached is the final plat for the Newton Parks and Public Works Edition submitted by Garber on behalf of the applicant city of Newton for property that is located on the north side of East 12th between North Duncan and I-135 Highway. As per the city subdivision regulations, the final plat was submitted to the appropriate city staff and area utility companies for review, along with the request that they forward proposed changes and comments. Those changes and comments were communicated to Garber, who will provide an updated version of the revised final plat incorporating the request and comments. Staff continues to work with the applicant on a few items noted under recommended action. The final plat now become, comes before the Newton Planning Commission for consideration. If the commission is satisfied that the requirements of the applicable subdivision regulations have been or will be met by the developer, you may approve the final plat, including any required and requested changes. And our comments are that, are what follows. Is our recommendation that the Newton Planning Commission approve the final plat for Newton Parks and Public Works addition to the city of Newton Harvey County contingent upon engineering staff receiving the comments noted above. Okay? And by the time I did my report, most of these have all been answered and resolved, so.
Okay. Are there questions for, in regard to the staff report? So do you, in the motion, would you like, if we were to so move this approval, are there certain items that you want to clearly delineate that we still need to do? Or, since you said most of these are already done?
They, they've submitted another plat, but it has not been reviewed by staff, so I'd like that these comments stay in there.
Oh, okay.
But I would just.
Just include all of those comments, that a way they can mark that way. Okay? Other questions for staff? Any question, I mean, any comments from the applicant? Please identify yourself.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Chris Bohm from Garver, 1995 Midfield Road, Wichita, Kansas. We're in agreement with the staff comments, and we'll finish up providing any other information required for the submission of the final plat. And I'll stand for any questions.
Are there questions for the representative for the owner?
Thanks, Chris.
I'll bring it back to the bench for action on this item. We're looking for a motion that would seek approval in regard, well, that also includes the staff comments.
So I'll make a motion to approve with changes of Southeast 12th, the East 12th Street, and the drainage plan will be reset with all changes top of the north, future quality, quantity area in addition, and addition added to plat.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second discussion in regard to the motion. Seeing no discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item three on tonight's agenda is to consider approval of Fox Ridge Edition zoning district amendment, lots 17 through 24, block one, lots 1 through 32, block two, and lots 3 through 14, block three, and continued. Is this also you, Justin?
It's either I or Devin. This is up to you guys, if you want me to reread the report. Otherwise, I do believe that last time it was asked upon us to find out if we would look into the R3 versus an R2, and if the applicant was in agreeance to move to the R2, that it would be looked at as that. So, so I guess it's up to you guys, if you want me to read, read the report again, but I believe staff has worked with them and legal, and I, we can go to the R2 if that's what you guys desire.
Commissioners who were present, is that the, the feeling of the, of the commission?
Yes.
Okay. And we can go through. So, anything you want to add to that, Justin, other than R3 to R2?
Correct. They're downgrading from the R3 that they requested to the R2.
Okay. Is the, is the owner, the owner's representative present to ask any, or to at least confirm that, or otherwise?
Yes, absolutely. Again, Chris Bohm from Garver. Absolutely, R2 is fine. And we, and then we left it at the last meeting, that was the question. So I checked in with the owner, Brian Legali Homes. R2 is great, which only allows single family or two-family. And the green area is the area for which the request is presented. The yellow around it is single-family, like it exists right now, and will stay single-family. And market demand has driven this request. His success over on the, let's call it the east half of the addition, has been very good and strong, so he would like to move forward to the west side with a similar configuration. We did leave single-family buffers similarly around the east side when it was zoned originally. And I'd stand for any questions.
Okay. Are there questions for the owner's representative? Do we need to continue a public hearing or anything in regard to this? Just go ahead and move it on to the, to the commission? Okay. What's that?
I would open it.
Okay. I'm just, we can, I'm just asking. Please, if there's anyone who would like to speak in favor or against this application, please come to the microphone and identify yourself.
Linda Stuckey, 1129 Wedgewood Place. So we're affected by this. And if he could just, if the, if you could come back up and explain the diagram again, that'd be great.
The owner's representative. Chris, would you mind?
I'm happy to do so. The yellow area that is the perimeter, if you will, of Fox Ridge Edition that abut some of the homes on Country Club Drive and on Kansas Avenue, that is already zoned, R1, single-family residential. It, we're not asking for anything on that. It will stay exactly the same. So the yellow stays single-family homes. The green interior to the site, the request is for R2 zoning, which allows either a single-family home or a two-family home. And that's it. Those are the, the two options to build a home on the green lots. And that's what we're asking the request on. The green lots are currently R1, the yellow color, and we're asking to zone them to R2, two-family homes.
Okay. And then what about the second phase?
On the east side? That was from the previous meeting, meeting. That was a variance to allow a five-foot north setback, so that homes that were situated on Southeast 10th Terrace would have a front porch that looks out to Southeast 10th Street, and there's a reserve along the south side of Southeast 10th, and there'll be a sidewalk there and some parking along the street. So they'd have like a front porch view on Southeast 10th with garages in the back of those homes, kind of the pink color, that face out to Southeast 10th Terrace. And that was just a variance for a building setback adjustment, and that was heard at the last meeting. Tonight, all we're concentrating on is the, the R2 zoning. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time understanding that. So the very top of Phase 2, is that where it goes back to the cul-de-sac?
That would all stay as an R1, that, other than what's in the big square on the right-hand side, which is zone R3.
If I can go up there and, need a pointer.
Here's Wedgewood.
You have to get our, correct. This, the southeast 10th, that's not existing yet. It'll be built.
Right.
Yeah, so, we have Kansas Avenue here on the left.
Right.
The existing Country Club Drive. Right. So, in other words, this would be the west side of the cul-de-sac. And there'll be duplexes in the yellow.
No.
In the green.
And single-family in the yellow. Yes, correct, correct. So, yeah, and I guess you ever have similar questions.
So if we live beyond that?
If you live on Wedgewood Place, you live right over in this area where the arrow is.
Right, almost to the end of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, then you're, you're, you're over here off of the chart.
And those are the 1 through 10, it looks like, on the north side of the cul-de-sac. Those are our single-family homes. Right, there's some single-family. Now, it'll be built. Yeah, so, and this was, oh, that's the setback, so.
It was a setback. When they built.
Correct, that's correct.
And, and Country Club is not going to be used as one of the main access roads, right?
No, not when it's built out. There's, intersection improvements will go in at Southeast 14th Connector. So there'll be a left turn-in and a, and a southbound right turn-in on Southeast 10th Street. And that'll be one of the first things that's built with the improvements, so that'll be where the construction traffic and such is directed. As, when this gets ready to be built, there'll be a, a big box culvert that goes here, that's that, kind of that channel that's right through the middle of the, of the cul-de-sac. That will be built, and then the main access will be a new arterial road that meets up with Kansas Avenue, thank you Suzanne, with a, with a split roadway and Ida. So the main entry will be here and through there, and then interior to the site, there'll still be access to Country Club Drive, but the main access will be Southeast 10th Street.
I'm trying to find, expanding Country Club Drive width-wise. I had someone ask me that the other day.
No.
I couldn't imagine it would, but.
No, that will stay, that will stay as is, correct.
To give you bearings, this intersection right here, where this road comes into Country Club Drive, is just southwest of where the swimming pool is today.
Right.
Okay? So this intersection is right about where this, the swimming pool is about right here. Okay?
And then as a bonus, at, at the end of the day, when that new box culvert, box bridge is in, then there'll be no flooding issues for access even back to Wedgewood, because you can always take Southeast 10th Street in and work you, your way up through the east side and come in through Country Club Drive, and then up and over to Wedgewood. I know in the past that, that steel culvert pipe under the channel on Country Club Drive has been overtopped. So there'll be a secondary way in that's, that's dry in a 100-year storm event.
And then, please, another question I have. You know, we do have a waterway that goes through there.
Yes.
And there's a pond, so what happens to the pond?
That's correct. Pond stays. There'll be a new weir that controls the 100-year flood, the concrete weir, well, big, long. The rest of the reserve, the, the goal is to leave it absolutely alone, other than what has to be absolutely done for safety. There's a couple of old pedestrian or cart bridges there. They will go away, but then they're just going to clean it up and mow it and trim up the trees a little bit and just leave it alone.
It's a nice pond, so.
Yeah, there, there'll be, yeah, that, the whole goal is not to disturb it.
And then, some of us did have concerns about, about drainage, as, you know, with, with the increased housing there and the decrease in green space, and, you know, it's going to be a whole lot more concrete. So we do have concerns about.
That was, that was handled at the time of plating. The new concrete weir will actually let water flow more effectively through the channel and leave the pond in place. And it, we have built in, per the city's requirements, some detention, stormwater detention storage that will take the peak off the storm as it goes through, but allow that big storm to go through even more effectively than it does now. So, at the end of the day, you're going to have a lot better access to your properties with this new configuration when it's completely built out.
And again, just to, I, I need some clarification myself.
Sure.
As to the housing plans here on the, on the east side, as you say, those will be single?
On the perimeter.
And dwellings?
Yes.
And then?
Duplex.
And then is R2 there?
It's R3, actually.
Okay. How much will be?
Let me write there. R3 is everything except the perimeter, but the big lot, the R3 is going to allow an apartment complex to go in there, and that's what's planned for that big lot, the big rectangle there that Suzanne is tracing. The rest will be duplex homes, and then on the north perimeter, are single-family.
So you're looking at these up here as duplexes?
Correct.
This and here.
And that would be an apartment complex?
On the big lot, correct. Yes.
150 units, I believe, or something.
I don't know what their latest, I haven't been dealing with the individual doing the design of the apartments. We've just been working on the residential lots. So I don't know what their plan is for the size. Hundred, 100 doors is what I heard originally, but I don't know where that stands right now.
But north of the apartment complex is single-family?
One little road, no, the whole cul-de-sac, as I recall, is, is single-family. Yes.
So where, I mean, where do they, where's the, the demand for this housing? I mean, especially, I mean, like with the R3, I mean, what's the?
Their market surveys say that.
Does it serve to people coming to Newton, or what?
Their, their market surveys show that there's a demand for rent, and I, I defer to staff on inquiries you get for housing in Newton, but.
I'll just speak to that a little bit. We've continued to do our housing analysis tool with the state of Kansas, and we've identified since 2019 that we needed over 200 rental units alone. We do know that we have been in a, almost a housing crisis, without you trying to use too strong of a word, where we continually struggled to bring young people especially to the community that may not be ready to purchase a property and are looking to rent, especially something that's a little bit on the newer side. So all of these continued builds that come before the planning commission, the city commission, are in a very concerted effort to bring housing to Newton that staff has worked with through many, many surveys and professional studies, and working closely with the Kansas Department of Commerce and Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. We've utilized different types of housing. You'll notice the Menonide Housing Project up on First and Boyd to work on affordable housing for the senior community. We are working on apartment complexes toward the south of town, kind of just leaving no stone unturned. But this addition itself will substantially help fill some of that void, but where we had been poised to end in 2020, we'd made very little progress, so we're hoping to continue to build up steam for that.
But just speaking for myself, just my two cents, I wonder if it might be more appealing to young families looking to rent if it wasn't a complex? If there was maybe more green space available, walking paths, rather than cramming in as much housing as you can? And I think that's, I think, the, the super-high density may be less appealing to a lot of young people looking to, to buy affordable housing and own a home. I think quality of life speaks to them quite a bit.
And like I said, this is just one of many different types of housing that was identified was, is apartment housing. So it's just one small piece of the puzzle. We'll have the duplexes, we'll have the single-family homes, and this is only one addition. We have multiple additions we're working on. So there should be some variety for everyone.
So is Connector Road being expanded, or is that going to be the back of the apartment complex?
No, the Connector Road, no, it's not the back of the apartment complex. There'll be intersection improvements there that allow left turns in northbound and southbound, right turns into Southeast 10th Street.
Are there other questions for the owner's representative?
I'm not sure if this is the owner's representative question, but the sewer work that's being done right now at the entrance of Coming to Greve, is that city, or is that E-6?
It's a city project that, that was made necessary by this improvement. So the city of Newton, plans went to the city of Newton for review. Newton, the city of Newton is doing the inspection on that construction as it goes in. So all of that's been completely worked through the city of Newton.
So after all the construction is done, does it get put back together in the way that it was with?
Yes.
Replanted, perhaps?
Yes.
And the sprinkler system isn't?
There are notes on the plans that address that, to restore it in kind when it's completed. Yes.
And again, I'm sorry, again, just for my clarification, again, the R3 is the apartment complex, is that right?
Correct. In part, so on the east half there, the apartment complex, the big lot, is R3, as are the individual lots that we, that all the lots, except the ones on the north cul-de-sac and the ones around the corner from, yeah, right by the pond.
Right, those are, these will all be R3.
They are R3, but R3 allows the multifamily. We just use that for simplicity on that phase, because R3 also allows two-family homes. The, the question on this side where it's green was, well, do you need the R3 since, do you want to do multifamily or simply do two-family homes? And the answer is only two-family homes. So tonight is just the question of the green.
But they would be rentals?
Whatever the, the builders on those lots choose to do with them. The market will dictate that.
So they could either be like duplex owned by two families?
They could be owned one side by one individual and one side by the other individual. Somebody could buy it and own it and rent it per whatever city regulations that, that govern that. And then the yellow lots remain, and they are already single-family home sites, so they'll, those will be single-family homes.
And then, sir, can I just get your name?
Both of you back there who spoke, if you could please identify yourself with name.
Sorry, what was that?
Mike Lloyd.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm the one that said yay.
Yes.
I second her, yay.
Michelle Van Meter, 1109 Wedgewood Place.
Thank you both. Other questions or comments in regard to the application? Yes, sir, please come identify yourself.
John Van Meter, 1109 Wedgewood Place. I belong to the yay. But it was initially, when, when the Fox Ridge complex residential unit was planned, we were in, in the understanding that it would be single residential homes. I also understand the need for the duplexes and, and affordable housing. But I believe originally the plan was for moderate-income homes, and I guess that was my hope. And I guess I stand in opposition to the rental units, the duplexes. You know, I understand we need to, need a large apartment building, but with what you currently have on the east side already approved, I'm not sure that, again, in my opinion, that we need more on the west side of the, of the ponds. So it is, I stand in opposition to the building of lower-income housing, if you will. Just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
Yeah, and I would also.
Please come to the microphone.
I would also echo those comments that John has, too, that the, it feels like we were here for the original development proposal, and it's, the changes are what have us concerned. Again, it comes down to the high density, greater number of rentals than the homeownership that we were initially thought was going to go into that development. So, so I again stand with John that we would see, would like to voice my opposition to any further changes being approved by the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments in regard to the application? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the bench to consider the, consider the application. Do the commissioners have any questions that need to be answered before I ask for some
This predates me, the original plans. Was it all planned R1, or did it change after? The only changes would be what they're requesting in front of you?
Everything you see on the right was original.
Okay. So it was already R3, then? Never did change? Okay.
I have one other question. I don't know if we asked it last time about traffic flows with the number of units in here. Were there any, was there any review of the traffic at South Kansas specifically at Interrence?
I can comment on that. That's why we have the larger intersection on Southeast 10th that connects to Kansas Avenue, and then the intersection improvements that I referenced at Southeast 14th Connector.
Yeah, with the separate turn lanes?
Correct. That's, that's what the accommodations for traffic that were made during the plating process. Thank you.
What's the will of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve the R2 zoning change for lots 17 through 24, block one, lots 1 through 32, block two, and lots 3 through 14, block three, for Fox Ridge Edition.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Discussion in regard to the motion. Any discussion in regard to the motion?
I think my only comment would be that, you know, just because they are zoned R2 doesn't mean that they wouldn't be single-family residents. The market will dictate that. If, if we end up with, with what they want as an R1 zoning, they'll, they'll build their house there. The market will dictate to that. That's probably my only comment on that.
My comment would be that we need housing choices in Newton, both single-family, multifamily, some people who buy duplexes, live in one side, rent the other side, can help them gain equity and, and grow that. I just think that housing choices are essential for our community, and I think this answers some of those, so. Other comments in regard to the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you all very much, and thank you for your comments. Item four on tonight's agenda is to consider a variance application for pole sign and additional square footage at 1608 East First Street, also known as Jump Start. You have that, Justin? Thank you.
The requirements for legal publication notification have been met following our staff and applicant comments. Explain how the variance request arises from such condition which is unique to the property in question and which is not ordinarily found in the same zone or district, and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner or the applicant. Commentary, our location setbacks quite a bit of distance from the I-135 elevated highway. Other successful businesses located in the area have taller pylon signs via this situation. This particular exit is a service exit for vehicles, and we need our brand to be effective. Fee, explain how the granting of this variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents. As previously stated, a number of surrounding properties already have signs that surpass the standard. that surpass the standard height of the city code. Our neighbors are also a service-based industry via the elevated highway. Also, there is very, very to no residential in this area. C, explain how a strict application of the provisions of this zoning regulation of which variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner requested, represented in the application. Commentary, our hardship consists of sitting back from the highway quite a distance as well as the construction changing the area around us and the elevated highway creating a hardship on us from the customers being able to see us from a distance to see our location effectively. In order for our service-type business to prosper and survive, it is important that we are able to advertise through the existing conditions. D, explain how the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. Commentary, our local, our location survives mostly on I-135 traffic with some local customers mixed in. Our location is located in a service rest stop type area. These locations were placed here based off of the highway traffic. There is little to no residential, residential due to this as a service area that our surrounding area, that area that our surrounding area will not be affected via the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. E, explain how the variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of the zoning regulations. Commentary, the general spirit and intent of the zoning regulations in this case is that the normal pole signs are seen by the general traffic at travel, at street level, where in our case we are trying to be seen from the elevated highway traffic and traffic circle that was built after our location existed. This particular service area is unique to the highway and will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of the zoning regulations. A variance cannot be granted if even one of the above conditions is not met. Variances are not for correcting mistakes that cause the property to come into noncompliance with the particular code requirement. Variances are not for situations where complying with the particular code requirement is inconvenient or more expensive. Our attachments are as follows. Staff comments, the planning commission can either approve, deny, or reduce the variance request.
Okay. Other questions for staff in regard to the presentation? So in our, in our presentation, there were two options. So you, you said we could approve or deny. Is that a proven option or not an option, or are we looking at both options?
Looking at both, and I know that the applicant is here to speak on it. Maybe he's chosen one since he submitted, but I would ask those questions on him.
No problem. Please identify yourself.
My name is Anders Herblshammer. I work for Ron Stein Company and we are representing Jumpstart.
Okay, excellent.
The two options come from allowed square footage. The first one we did would go over on square footage as well as height. So if we were only going to get one thing approved, we were looking to get the height approved. So the second option would still meet square footage set up by city code.
So when you refer to the section, the second option, is that option B?
Yes.
Okay. So that meets the square footage and gets you the height that you want?
Yes.
The other exceeds both square footage and?
And height.
And height, okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions for staff and then we'll ask?
Well, so, we got burned one time by putting a sign in a certain location. So I'm, I'm a little bit, it shows here, are we asking anywhere in that 51 by four-foot area?
No, that area is where we are putting, city code says your signs have to be separated by 150 feet. So based off Google Maps measurements, we're putting it 151 feet away from the other sign.
So where, where exactly would that be?
If you look in the aerial view, where that yellow box is, and I actually think from what they've, what they've been out there and looked at it, it's actually going to be a little bit farther east than where I actually have it set on this aerial view.
So if you did, the, the original sign's still going to stay?
Yes.
This is in addition?
Mm-hmm. The owner wants just the price to be able to be seen from, from the highway.
And just to be clear, it's not 151 feet, it'd be 51 feet.
51 is what's on?
It's 50 feet in between signs and you're going to 51.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, yes.
I didn't think it was 150 feet there.
It's 50 feet and you're going to 51.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay.
Maybe 151 baby steps.
There you go. Other questions for staff in regard to the application?
It was noted in here that there's been other variances allowed for signs, sign heights. I just wondered what those were.
The other variance would have been for the QuickTrip sign.
Yeah, I was going to ask about QuickTrip, so what's the, what's their sign?
They got a sign height variance.
Mm-hmm. What was the height? Do you remember?
I do not recall off the top of my head.
But they're within the square footage, just had a height variance?
They are within the square footage, but the height did.
Okay, okay. Is that located closer to the interstate then?
There's, yes, yes.
Yeah, it's right up by the interstate.
Correct.
Can I ask a question? Because we, you know, I've asked in the past about, if we've had any complaints about signage. So since you're a sign guy and you've got two different proposals here, are there a lot of cities that would have a different size requirement than what we have?
I mean, each, each city's kind of unique. I mean, I do all the permitting for our office and I've done everywhere from Oklahoma to South Dakota. So I mean, there's no two cities that are the same. Everyone has their own sets of rules and it's kind of working with the city to see what, what they will allow and what they're okay with.
Good job not answering my question.
He's not going to say the city is wrong.
I guess, I guess that would be a question. Are, do you think that are the rules and regulations for that signs, size of a sign are more stringent here than other areas or do you, or in the middle or?
I would say you guys...
And nobody's just me and you talking.
Yeah. I mean, you guys are about average on, on what you guys do allow. It's, I mean, it's one of those things where they are going to be the farthest property away from the highway and they know that QuickTrip's going in with a taller sign. So they still want to be seen when people see the QuickTrip sign and come in and say, okay, QuickTrip, oh wait, there's another gas station. What's that all about?
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm with you. I just thought, why I had you here, I thought I'd ask.
Get some intel.
Well, while you're still at the podium and it doesn't look like there's any more questions for staff, is there anything you would like to add to the presentation?
Not, not really. I mean, it's pretty, pretty straightforward. They just want to go taller and bigger.
All right. Questions for the applicant anymore?
I just, one last one for me. Option A and option B, is there a preferred option? Is option A preferred?
Yes.
And option A, option B is basically, the only variance is the height, right?
The height on the option is B, yep.
Option A was my owner and Jumpstart, Jumpstart's owner's choice. I made option B knowing what city code was and trying to abide by your guys' square footage, but be allowed to get the height. So they don't think about rules and everything. They want what they want and then I got to come in and try to, how can I mold this to fit to what they want and what you guys will allow?
So that adds, I'll add one more question. So the light from the sign, I think there's apartments close to this on the other side of Jumpstart to the north, isn't it?
It would be hotels.
It's a hotel.
Hotel, I'm sorry.
Two hotels.
Yeah.
Three, yes.
Is lighting a concern with signs of this height for, and is there like a circumference that you have that?
They all have a dimming mechanism in them. It's either, you can either set it to manually do it or it can automatically do it. But it takes it, during the day it has a brighter aspect because you have the sun out that's going to counteract it. But after a certain point, like especially some of them that have a, they, a photo cell on them, they, once the light starts to change, it dims it down so it's not overbearing on the surrounding community.
Well, I was thinking the difference between option A and B, that that would be a lot brighter with all that white there.
Other questions for the applicant?
Pretty sure the QuickTrip will be lit up like a Christmas tree as well. The whole place, yeah.
Okay. If there are no questions, I would bring it back to the bench for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve option B.
Is there a second to approve option B or to, yeah, yeah, to approve option, option B? Is there a second?
Oh, second to?
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the variance for option B, which keeps the sign with, sign square feet within the regulations, but gives the height of 50 feet. Is that right? Is that what your motion is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any discussion in regard to the motion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good, great presentation. Item five on tonight's agenda is information only. You have all 13 of the articles that we've been talking about every month. Are you wanting any action on this at all, Justin? Just to get it all in our hands and its completeness?
Correct, and then it will go to public comment at the next meeting.
Okay.
The only change or changes that could happen to this is we're still working with legal staff on the chart for signs. We have some language in there, but we are still trying to iron that out a little bit, so.
Signs could come up from time to time.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for Justin in regard to this for information only?
Only that, I know we've talked about that this is a, a document that we're always going to be working on and towards. So have we, have we received any feedback on when we made some of these changes? What's that been, a year, a little over a year ago now? Has there been any, any, any additional feedback from outside sources on, on any section? If there is, I'd, I'd really like that to come forward.
Most of those comments were in the sign ordinance that I get from, you know, like staff members like that. We're just here, whatever. But, so, and like, just an example is we, we don't allow monument signs within R1, R2, and R3. Well, that's kind of hard when every development going in puts a monument sign right at the front of their development and they're asking, well, why can't we? Well, they're everywhere.
So, so then we know we need to make that change. So, so staff will bring us some new language?
Correct.
At the next meeting?
Ninety-nine percent of it's already in here in red. And then if you guys have comments next time or when it gets open to public, then they can make their comments and if you guys want to make those changes, we're, we're open to hear them. I mean, that's, so, and that'll go as a recommendation to, I believe, to city commission as well after you guys have your say, so.
The pub, public comment at the next meeting?
Yes.
Excellent. Is there any old business?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Any commissioner have any old business? Okay, under new business, Commissioner Arlen had brought up the minutes. He and I had had some discussion in regard to how minutes are, are taken. And you're doing an incredible job. I, I serve on a number of boards who often worry about, you know, the purpose of the minutes, which is to, to note as much about the action being taken and not as much about the discussion being taken. And we thought we would ask Devin, you know, the thoughts on that because counsel talks about that. I mean, it's one thing when we, when we have to say we have to adhere to or, or recognize that these seven items, or we have not found fault in any of these seven items and so we can move along with this. So you have a, have an opinion on that? I mean, the, the minutes are, I mean, when I miss a meeting, I can read through and it's almost, it's, yeah.
My, my concern is not necessarily so much about what is being put in the minutes, but whom and what the, and who specifically was bringing up the discussion. I, I, I've been on several boards and in my opinion, you need to limit in the minutes who brought up discussions about certain things. Not that you're taking away what the discussion was about, I have no problems with that. I just think if there's a problem in the future and it comes back in front of us with some litigation, I just think having the names of who discussed what is an issue. But I'll leave it up to you as coun, legal counsel to, and you don't have to give us an answer right now. You can come back.
And I think we can talk about it and come up with that.
You can come back with it too.
The minutes, the minutes are incredible because they're, they, you know, if you're not there, you can really find out the flavor of the meeting. But again, open discussion, open meeting, the meetings are taped, so, yeah, just. I mean, that's something we can research and come back with what we find for that.
Commissioners have any comments in regard to that? That would be great.
I would just say I really like the minutes. I like them comprehensive, but that's me.
The story is there, which is helpful as opposed to just they voted for this and they voted for that. There is some detail. So when you do miss a meeting, you can kind of read back what was discussed.
And say, I can't believe he said that.
It's wrong. If it's recorded, if all this is recorded, you're going to know who said what anyway. It's out there on the internet. You're going to know what Sheriff Kelsey said, so it's something touch and touch.
Well.
It's out there.
Uh, yes and no. They would have to make a request for...
Don't we put them? I thought we posted these out. We, we already post them online, I thought.
They're online.
Posting the minutes online.
You're already out there.
Any other new business from the commissioners? And thank you, Devin, for taking a look at that. And again, thanks for doing this. Okay. Well, that now concludes the, the Newton Planning Commission. At this time, I'd like to open up the Historical Preservation Commission meeting and call this meeting to order. I'd like to consider the minutes of the August 7th meeting, which was the last time we came together as Historical Preservation Committee. So has everyone had an opportunity to review those minutes? I would entertain a motion for their approval or their amendment.
Move to approve?
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion in regard to the minutes? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item three in tonight's agenda is review, a request of 207 East First. A review for new construction, a garage at 207 to 209 East First, which is in the McKinley Historic District, so.
Yes, and I will go ahead and take that. I wanted to make a couple of apologies in putting this agenda together. I had some oversight. First, in your agenda, it says Planning Commission Agenda instead of Historic Preservation, so that will be corrected in an updated one. And the memo's got a couple of errors and one of which is, this is a little bit of a historic piece where Commissioner Hanson may remember that they came before us previously to have, asked for demolishment and we'll go through that. But this time's application did not make it in the pack with the historicals, so I'm going to come by and bring you a copy.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for that. Thank you.
And we do have the property owner with us tonight, so they are not... And we do have the property owner with us tonight, so they are able to answer any other questions. So they came to the Historic Preservation Commission in twenty twenty-one to ask for demolition of their garage. You'll see that application, that's the one that did make it into your packet. It was unstructurally safe, it was not repairable. The Historic Preservation Commission is required to deny that request as it would damage or destroy the property, which they did. However, they instructed staff to assist them in making it appeal to the city commission, which we did through the city clerk, and they were granted that exemption by the city commission to demolish that building in the purposes of health and public safety. And in that process, they had been planning to build a new facility. And so they come to you tonight with those plans to continue to rebuild what they took away. So what I just handed you was the actual certificate of appropriateness application for the project there. It has a dual address because it was a duplex at one point. It's gone through a lot of changes through the years, so that's why we have that as its historical address, even though most of our building permits, you'll see it as just two oh seven East First. So they are looking at putting in a garage on their property. Again, the old one had been a historically contributing resource, but this one does not need to match it, it just needs to match the district. So what you'll see up on the screens today is kind of what they're looking about doing. They had a much larger building that, that was demolished, it was built in multiple phases. And so they're looking to make the footprint a little bit smaller. They've already spoken with some of our planning and engineering staff about the placement and lines and all those fun things that we wanted to make sure were in place first before it came to you as a design item. They are looking to also repair the concrete. There are photos in your packet showing the demolition of the concrete, so it's certainly nothing in there that would have any historic significance according to staff's eyes. And report back to the plan, moving a, a little bit around the house, allowing for a little bit of a more usable outdoor space. So you'll see that again back in the item. You'll see the garage plans that they submitted, along with the properties, the properties of the garage itself, having room for three cars and some extra storage, the engineered wood siding that they're looking to put on, and all of the specifications that we require. According to our ordinance, infill development for the historic district is, does have some guidelines to it. We do discuss in our ordinance that should be sensitive to and take into account the special characteristics of the designation. So that's your scale, height, orientation. Staff does see that this has been taken into consideration as we're looking at a similar site and space. Normally, we're looking at facades, window patterns, porches, and other things. This being an outbuilding, those design features don't weigh in as heavily. Looking through the Sanborn maps, this outbuilding was built separate from the house. This is, the one that they did demolish was probably the third or the fourth outbuilding at the time. So a little bit of flexibility in finding something that might match with the house. But that's obviously for you to make comment on. And then just making sure that the style of architecture sort of works with it in harmony. We do also have the McKinley homeowner guidelines that just gives us some tips moving forward, and those are in that staff report, that you can identify it as new construction. You're looking at your historical patterns as a guide. Again, this was a rectangular building, we're being replaced with a fairly rectangular building. That goes with the styles next to each other. This will be able to be seen by the road, which is slightly. And then, again, to keep them more simplistic in design and not add a lot of architectural elements that would not have existed on it, especially with an outbuilding like a garage. So as you look through this, there's two actions that the body will need to take tonight. And the recommended actions from staff are that you would approve it, that it will not damage or destroy. You could also deny it, saying that it would damage or destroy a historic resource. But we're, a little bit, we'd have to show cause for that since the historic resource has already been demolished. And then the second one would just say that the application is appropriate to the local guidelines, and those would be the recommended actions from staff.
Any questions for staff or in regard to this application? Seeing none, with the applicant, please identify yourself and see if there's anything else you would like to add to the application.
My name is Joey Rensherr. I'm the owner of two oh seven. Besides what was shown in the initial images, I don't really have a whole lot more to add. We will be, one thing to note, we will be extending the patio space in the back with an additional concrete slab in the archway.
In the back?
In the back, correct, yes. And there is currently a concrete patio area there already that we're, that we'll be extending, so.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
I would bring the application to the Historic Preservation Commission to see if there are any further questions or ask for an action. Again, we're asking for two actions here. One, it would not damage or destroy, or it would, and then whether it's appropriate addition to the, to the area. Staff has recommended it would not damage, and it is appropriate. So what's the will of the commission?
I'll move that we approve the application as it will not damage or destroy, and approve the application as it is appropriate to the local guidelines.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Excellent. Thank you very much, and hope you have a great. Having been someone who was in the old garage twenty years ago, probably. It was not in good shape twenty years ago. It probably hasn't been thirty. Yeah, I moved into McKinley neighborhood in eighty-seven.
Wow.
So, anyway. Yeah, that's a few years ago. Okay. Old business, a little bit of training. Appreciate you bringing those slides to us a couple of months ago, those were really great, and so we had a chance to review those.
Right, and so, yeah, this is just to add to your files in case you did not see them already, and also to make them available for the public consumption. That per our CLG agreement, you all did sit through the training, and as I'm going to be putting together our annual CLG reports, I do note that, so I'll note your attendance and that you did receive that training as well.
Do the commissioners that miss the training have to take it?
Oh, it's only a percentage.
I'm hap, I'm happy to. I, I looked through the slides, I printed all the slides up and put them in my book, so.
But no, we will, we do keep, and we have to have a percentage of appointed officials and staff that have so many hours every year. And so usually, the large bulk is held by staff, and that can also be planning staff as well when they sometimes are willing enough to sit through some of the trainings I send their way. And so we can count all of that, but we do have to remain up to date on that.
I'm willing to sit for a makeup test, it's okay.
Okay. I have just one other small announcement for you all on, it's just a little progress on our HPF grant. We did actually put the RFP out to the resurvey of the downtown. The entire C-three district out today was published. So hopefully, we'll be receiving back some proposals on that, and the plan will be to bring them back at the first meeting in December for your review.
Excellent. Any other business to come before the commission? Commissioners, any other business? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.